May I just be with us as we make the many decisions to help our county to grow and flourish? And Lord, just thank you for all you do for us in your son's name. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, ladies and gentlemen, first up is approval of the minutes for June 19th regular meeting. Are there any questions or discussion needed?
I make a motion to approve the minutes for the 19th meeting.
Okay, Brent made a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Jerry. And I will abstain since I wasn't here. The rest of you, if you approve, please say aye.
Aye, abstain.
Oh, and Ron is abstaining because he was gone too, so. Okay, so up first, Ashley Dyer, public defender.
Good afternoon. How's everyone doing today?
Good.
Doing fine.
Good. Well, I wanted to come before you today and take time to explain a little bit about my proposed changes in my 2024 budget. And the reason I wanted to do so is because this request, it comes with a little bit different structure in the public defender office. And so I don't know that I'm going to have time at our budget hearings to really go over that with you and explain why I'm making these requests. But if you all recall, other than our two new members, Mr. Brown and Mr. Woodall, in the end of 2022, the Indiana Public Defender Commission made changes that were going to go into effect January 2024. Green County is part of the Indiana Public Defender Commission reimbursement program, which means any monies that we spend in public defense, as long as we remain in compliance with their caseload standards, we can get up to 40% back from the state of Indiana that goes into the general fund for the county. So just to give you an explanation, in 2022, we got back over $230,000 of our $583,000 budget in 2022. Excuse me, my budget in 2023 was $583,000. It was less, about $520,000 in 2022. But nonetheless, it's a substantial benefit to the county to help get that reimbursement. But tied to that compliance is that we must remain within caseload standards that's set by the state. I have no control over that. They tell me where our public defenders need to be in our caseload standards, and we must comply. If we're not in compliance, we're at risk of losing that reimbursement. Well, in 2024, those standards change. And if you look at our quarter one for 2023, I have three out of four public defenders that were out of compliance come 2024. So what that means is for us to remain in compliance, we have to change the way our office is running currently. And currently, we have three full-time public defenders, including myself, and three part-time contracts. One of those contracts has been unfilled since November 1 of 2022. Frankly, the landscape of attorneys in Green County has changed significantly. We don't have new attorneys coming to this area. And so the attorneys who once held those contracts have retired. God rest their souls, some have passed away. And others have just moved on because it's a very demanding profession. It's demanding to maintain a private law practice, but also public defense. But in this county, we only have one attorney right now who even does private practice and criminal defense, and that's Timothy Shunk, who currently holds one of our contracts. So our other contract is held by an out-of-county attorney. This third contract that we've had unfilled, fulfilled for almost a year, we've had three applications, one living in northern Indiana, about a three-and-a-half-hour drive, and two others in the Indianapolis area. And I can just tell you, with our caseload, it's not manageable for somebody that lives an hour and a half, two hours away to have one of these contracts. And so we just don't have a good applicant, and that's causing some of the issues with us remaining in compliance. We've been in compliance to date, but in 2024, when our caseload standards change, I can see that really changing for our office. And so I'm trying to address the problem before it gets here. And so the way I would like to do that, you will see in my budget, about $100,000 increase from this year to next year's budget. But hiring one full-time public defender would increase our budget by $80,000 if we went that route. But instead of hiring a full-time public defender, I have another proposal. And that proposal is hiring two additional support staff. Because right now, my office is considered inadequately staffed. And so again, our caseload that we can take is lower if we're inadequately staffed versus if we're adequately staffed. So if I can bring on two more support staff, me, Ellen Martin, and our other full-time attorney can have a higher caseload than we have currently now. That should help with some of those compliance issues. But another reason I would like to be in adequately staffed offices, right now, I have one support staff in my office, and that support staff has been with me since 2018. But because of rules of conflict of interest rules, she cannot do work for all the attorneys, because if I represent a client in a case where there's also a co-defendant, we have to maintain privacy and confidentiality within the office. And so I can't have my secretary working on my cases, who's also working on the other attorney's cases, because secrets could be shared. Often, our interests are reversed to one another. Even though we're in the same office, our interests are reversed. My client could be pointing the finger at Ms. Martin's client and vice versa, and Ms. Martin's client pointing the finger at mine. So what I'd like to propose is three full-time support staffs in my office. Just to give you a little bit of an idea of the support staff in the prosecutor's office, and this is by no mean demeaning the prosecutor's office, and I believe that every one of their support staff is needed and necessary for the function of their office, but they have a receptionist, one full-time investigator, a part-time investigator, an office manager, a legal assistant in the superior court, a victim advocate who also processes discovery, a file clerk, and an intern. Again, we have my secretary and one intern in our office.
You're looking to add three?
Sorry, adding just two.
Three of them. Now, do you have more response? Do you have more applicants than you do attorneys?
For full-time positions?
Right.
Yes. And actually, right now, I have an open full-time position in my office. Mr. Levi Basinger just left recently in June and took a full-time general counsel position for Green County Health. And part of that, you know, our job is very high demand. We represent criminal defendants on a regular basis. But those attorneys, Mr. Basinger and Ms. Martin, they're currently their own support staff. They're doing all their administrative work in addition to being full-time attorneys. It's too much for these individuals. It leads to burnout. It leads to just the thought of being overworked. And so I think it could help with retention of our employees if I could have these additional support positions in my office.
What kind of salary do the support staff make?
And that brings me to my second point. My current office manager right now makes $4.33 less on the hour than the office manager in the prosecutor's office, who started just last year. And Tana has been with me since 2018. Again, I'm not demeaning the prosecutor's office or his support staff, because they deserve every penny that they earn. But so does Ms. McDonald, my office manager, in this position, because she is not just a secretary. She assists me with my budget every year. I have a quarterly report due every year. I'm audited at least two times, once on our quarterly reports, but also on the public defender supplemental fund. Now, we have a new Title IV e-fund that provides reimbursement to the county that we also get audited on that scene. And so she's doing, she's essentially doing all those audits for me, getting those prepared for my review, and then I, of course, review them, sign off on them. But she is so much more than a secretary. She does payroll. She does claims, all my administrative filings. And so I believe that she should be paid in parity with the office manager and the prosecutor's office.
How does that disparity come to be? I mean, is her classification different than one in the prosecutor's office?
Yes. And that's what I'd be seeking in 2024, is to have her reclassified as an office manager. I can't say when or how that came about, because it was before my time here. But Tana is a vital asset to our office, and she needs to be reclassified as an office manager, because that's what she is, especially if we have additional support staff that's going to be beneath her. And that's why I need the support staff too, though, because if Tana is injured, sick, or decides to retire, I would have to start from ground one in hiring somebody. I wouldn't have somebody already within my office that I could just possibly promote into this position.
So you're $100,000 to bring her to adequate?
Yes.
And then we get $40,000 back?
Forty percent, up to 40%, yes.
Well, $100,000.
And what I'm doing is also, right now, we have three contracts. I'm eliminating one of my contracts. My request will be to eliminate one of the three-quarter time contracts, which is the unfilled one that we've had for about a year, convert one of those three-quarters to a full-time contract or employee position. Right now, I have someone who's willing to fill the three-quarter time contract to a full-time contract, because he has benefits, he has a private practice, and is willing to do that. But I would, my request would be that I have approval for a full-time employee in case that contract person leaves me. It's going to be much easier to find a full-time employee down the road than replace it with another full-time contract.
I have a question for Marvin, back to the office manager. So if you just try to reclassify his job, does it have to be owed as a completed? Or, I don't know if you can answer that question, because I know it's a huge question.
I don't think it needs to be opened up to anything. The one thing that I do see as likely being necessary is that the public defender's office does not have an office manager position description. And so that will have to be addressed. You can address the rest of it, the rest being the salary ordinance, when the salary ordinance is considered in the light fault. Those are the two major things that I would see.
And then, you know, with my staff's position, she's paid $4.33 less than the office manager currently in the prosecutor's office, who just started last year, and Tana's been here since 18. $2.43 less than the chief deputy assistant, and even a quarter less than the receptionist in the prosecutor's office. And she's so much more. She does, she does all of that. She's a receptionist. She's an office manager. She's payroll. She's human resources within our office. I mean, she's just so much more. And I would like, my first and only request, if I can't get everything I'm asking for, is that, that she be paid in parity with the office being in the prosecutor's office.
Okay, so you said $2.43 less than what position?
The chief deputy's assistant.
Chief deputy assistant. Okay, and so then...
Then I have actually turned out, pass out to all of you.
Okay, that would be great. So on the, so you want her brought up at least and be considered an office manager, and then the two part-time people, or the two full-time support staff, are they like paralegals, or would they just be considered?
I would have one classified as a secretary and one classified as a paralegal.
Okay.
But I would probably advertise it as a secretary or a paralegal, just because it may be hard in Green County to find somebody with that actual credential as a paralegal.
Okay.
Position on our end would be one of each, right? Secretary?
Yes. Yes, but...
Right, you may have to advertise.
I may have to advertise it as a secretary or a paralegal position, just because the credentials just may not be there for an actual paralegal certificate.
I feel for you.
I have a couple of questions.
Sure.
Back over what we were talking about. So currently, you have three full-time public defenders?
Mm-hmm.
And you have three outstanding contracts, or you have three contracts, one of which is unfilled?
Correct.
Okay. You have one support staff in your office right now?
Correct.
There's a conflict of interest if that support staff works for the other public defenders at any time?
Not at any time.
When they are, when you have defendants of a case that are co-defendants being represented by public defenders?
That would be the...
Correct.
So the staff you're asking for, is that then going to be of a general nature, support staff of where that person could then be tasked to work for one of the other public defenders?
Yes. So the way I would envision it being structured would be, one secretary would be for Ms. Martin, one secretary would be for our unfilled full-time position. However, that third one, I would also like to have a paralegal certificate that could actually do work for the entire office. We would have to, as the attorneys, screen out the conflicts. So like, if I knew that I had a case with a co-defendant, which Ms. Martin had, was representing, we would have to do our due diligence in not assigning that support staff any paralegal duties on those cases. So ultimately, we would have to personally screen that out. However...
Okay. A few more other questions. Office manager, are you wishing that title to expand that person's role, or just to ensure that we can compensate them appropriately for what they're doing now?
Respectfully, I don't think her duties need to be expanded to fulfill that role. But if we did have additional support staff, I would foresee that she would be the eyes and the ears when the attorneys are not present in the office. We spend probably 50%, if not more, of our time out of the office in court. And so as I do expand her, I would have to expand her duties to some degree to help assist those other support positions when we're not in the office to assist them.
A couple of other questions. Out of county, you're getting applications from people that are currently employed in northern Indiana and two out of the Indianapolis area?
Mm-hmm.
How, I guess I'm not quite sure. They're going to commute, I mean, if you went that way. You obviously said a minute ago that you didn't think that was, that was good.
Yeah.
But aside from that, it looks like you're in a pinch, you're in a bind to find public defenders. Let me ask this question. What percent of the current defendants that we have in the system or on the docket now are being defended by your office?
I couldn't give you that number off the top of my head. However, there was a study done about two years ago, and in comparison, Green County versus Monroe County versus Lawrence County versus Davies County and Orange County, I believe it was, we had the highest percentage of criminal defendants that requested public defense services. Like, for example, of all criminal defendants that go before the courts, we were around 65% or 70% that requested public defenders.
So your office is defending 65% to 70% of all the criminal cases brought before the courts?
I couldn't say that definitively today, because that study was done a few years ago. But it's a high number, yes.
So can't say definitively, and I'm not going to hold you to it, but would you say a feeling is that it's grown?
Oh, absolutely.
Stay the same or diminished?
It's definitely grown. I can tell you that our caseload has increased across the board since I became chief public defender in 2020. It's gradually increased over the years.
I don't think I have any more questions.
Everyone knows this is very...
Judge Martin reiterated what you're saying.
I'm sorry?
I think Judge Martin reiterated what you're saying about the increase when we were doing the mental health appropriation, about the numbers and what they were then. She had the exact numbers in there.
And some of these changes in my budget are mandated by the state if we want to stay in the reimbursement programs. So for example, these contract attorneys currently, a full-time contract only has to be paid $60,000 right now, but in 2024, that goes up $20,000. And so that increases our contracts by state mandate. So I did run a budget with no changes other than the request of the pay parity request for my office staff. And that budget was at $620,000, or excuse me, $640,111. That's if I didn't make any changes. I didn't add support staff or change around how our contracts are currently. It would have came in still at $640,111. My budget I proposed to you with these changes is $681,218. So it's a $41,107 difference by adding these support positions, eliminating a contract, shifting it from a three-quarter time contract to a full-time contract.
I thought you said $800,000.
$681,218,000 is my proposed budget. But had I not made any changes other than requesting pay parity for my staff members, this still was going to come at $640,111. And of course, I had the requested pay increases and things, but no major changes within the office. I'm not asking, you know, for approval on anything today. I really just wanted to educate you so you knew what I would be asking for when I come before you here next month. But if you wouldn't mind, I'll go ahead and pass out a little handout for you so you have that.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Glad you came in.
Does anyone else have any other questions today?
I think we're fine. Thank you for bringing this to us.
Thank you.
Okay, next up, Sam Drummy with Hybridge Solutions.
Good afternoon, Councilwoman. I know pretty much all of you, but I'm Sam Drummy with Rowell Law Firm, here on behalf of HBSC Properties LLC. It's an Indiana limited liability company. They are out of New Jersey. They bought about a five-and-a-half-acre tract over in the Westgate area and are planning to construct an 18,000-square-foot commercial facility. They expect 4,000 square feet of that to be office space, 14,000 square meters of mixed-use space, primarily warehouse space. This would be a company that would be seeking contracts with the Navy. In the interest of overpromising, or not overpromising and underdelivering, they're estimating to spend $950,000. They think in all likelihood that that'll come in over a million. And they're seeking a 10-year real property abatement for the construction of that facility.
Oh, I thought the...
How many?
I thought the, yeah, I thought the...
Eight?
Matrix said eight.
I think the request is 10, and we filled out a matrix.
Did the matrix appear, or?
The matrix indicates an eight-year payment.
An eight-year?
Yeah.
That's what I think.
Can we talk about the matrix for just a minute?
Sure.
Yeah. Did you fill this out?
I did.
Okay. Under the type of enterprise, you've got listed here, research and development. Looking at the proposal, it does say in here somewhere warehousing, operated warehouse, fabrication, assembly, office space, facility between four and eight employees for 14,000 square feet. 18,000, 14,000, 18,000. How does that play into research and development? Is that not more what would be there, a score of six warehousing, maybe even a score of seven manufacturing and warehousing somewhere in there?
I think the thought, well, and if you look at the declaratory resolution that we've proposed, it consecrates an electronics lab being operated in this facility. Again, it kind of depends on what the Navy will ultimately end up using this building for. But we certainly would anticipate research and development, you know, activities going on there.
Do they currently have, I thought, like, something that they currently held the contract. Do you not already hold the contract?
You know what? I'm having a hard time remembering the answer to that. Marvin, do you?
Yes, I can address that. Hybridge Solutions, the company that's directly associated with HBSC, has been a longtime provider specifically for Crane. And one of the principal things they've done in the past is to keep legacy radar systems alive by rebuilding from scratch or redesigning parts to keep those units functioning. A lot of older ships, a lot of older radars, they are on the front line of that. They did receive a new contract for those services. And so part of their location, part of their need and desire to locate here was the fact that now Navy contracts, or any department of defense contracts, I believe, with vendors have to, vendors have to have a physical presence within a hundred-mile radius of the principally served base. They chose to build here, not 20 miles away, not 50 miles away. Now, they are doing some work right now out of Bilodee, because that's where space was available to get started. But they're very anxious to get the building going. I don't know what other things they are exploring with the Navy, but I do know that they are looking at several different lines of goods and services provision that the Navy is very interested in. I'll also note that a particular contract they did receive is a single-source contract.
Do you know what period of performance on that is?
Off the top of my head, no. I don't remember that I've heard him say.
Just wondering, you know, as far as, how long is the contract going to run, if you know they're going to have a presence there? And, I mean, there's a lot of empty buildings in the N part, and none of those are 200 acres.
Apparently, for what they're wanting to do, no. They want a freestanding dedicated facility. This originally started as a 10,000-square-foot facility with 2,000 square feet office space incorporated into it. In the time that they've been working with the redevelopment commission, who sold them the five-and-a-quarter acres that is represented in the legal description of the resolution, that has grown to, at one point, they thought 12,000, and I think the next I heard was 15, and the newest is 18, and that's what their design plan is for currently. So it's almost double the size that they originally started out planning.
I should also note that Denton Clark, who's one of the principals, if the preliminary resolution is approved, he will be at the August meeting of the council and can answer a lot more specific questions as to what their operations are, what their outlook is, what type of contracts they're bidding on.
Question about the real estate. I pulled it up on GIS, the address. It looks like it's right on County Line Road. Okay, 5.55-acre piece. It's got road fundage on it, correct? Just to the north of it is a piece that still belongs to Green County redevelopment?
About three acres, an acre, only an acre of which is useful, because the rest of it is wooded and steep ravine. Hybridge has expressed interest in that, but it's more important right now that they get their building up on the particular property than it is to be concerned about selling more property. But unfortunately, on the property retainer, there is only about an acre useful. If Hybridge did purchase that property at some future date, they would have to take all of the acreage, not just the good acre closest to their building.
The 3.87 is, which is the parcel just to the north of that.
Mm-hmm.
So Green County redevelopment is the owner of that piece of property there. So the Green County redevelopment is the owner of that piece of property there. How do they access that property? Was this all one parcel?
Either retained easement on the survey that's been recorded.
I saw an easement on there. I wondered if that was the reason for that. This was all one parcel originally?
It was. This was referred to locally as the Cook, K-O-C-H, park.
Yeah.
It was a nine-point-four acre family tract, and the redevelopment commission acquired it some years ago, I think ten-plus years ago. And it's basically laid with no interest or nothing happening in that area until just about eighteen months ago, which I believe is about the time we started working with Hybridge.
There was, yeah, it looks like 2012, they made a deal to purchase it. There was, in the records of the county, there's a picture of a building. Has a building been raised? Is there no building on the property now?
That building was raised almost as soon as the property was acquired by the redevelopment commission.
Now, I kind of figured that, but the picture still shows it's buried.
It's empty.
I think I've asked all my questions.
Anybody else think?
Marvin, is there total employment protection?
They're projecting, and again, trying not to overpromise, underdeliver. They're projecting between four and eight employees, paying between twenty and forty dollars an hour. That would be full-time employees with benefits.
They're planning expansion on that at the time, but...
I think, again, it would kind of depend on what the use of the property ends up being and, you know, whether there would be additional people needed to operate the facility.
Well, it looks like you're right, I'm sorry, I said I asked everything, but I'm now finished here. Looks like you're right, in the mid-range, fifteen to twenty-one points for an eight-year abatement, but they're asking for a ten?
Well, and that's, you know, a ten would be nicer for them. Obviously, that's up to you guys.
Well, I can say personally that if we do a matrix and it says eight, I'm not for ten. We have a matrix for a reason.
Sure. And that's, and that's obviously not a decision you guys would make until next meeting anyway, but yes, no, we understand the matrix, and Marvin has been, as he always is, very helpful in, you know, explaining that process and helping us through this. Anything else?
I guess just for the next, we'd like to know, you know, their project, what period of performance is, they have the options.
Yeah. And like I say, he'll be here, and he can, he can get a lot more specific on those types of questions.
So today, what we're looking at is a motion for the resolution, correct?
Yes. What you're doing today is declaring this particular person of property to be an economic revitalization area, and that is what the resolution proposes to accomplish. It's preliminary in the sense that this is the first step toward an abatement. The second resolution that will come next month, if this is approved, is called a confirmatory resolution, and that, among other things, is where the actual terms of the abatement are set forth.
So even though it says in here a ten-year, it's got the verbiage ten-year, we're not committed to that at all?
The only actual request, the ten-year description there, if I recall correctly, is merely a request.
That's what I said.
It is one of their warehouse statements.
It's just stating what they're requesting.
The actual final action on the part of the council is to determine whether or not you believe the property to qualify as an economic revitalization area without regard to the number of years that they are seeking, because ultimately, you said that.
Any other questions, discussions? Then I would seek a motion for the preliminary resolution to declare this as an economic revitalization area.
So moved.
Okay. Randall made the motion. Ron, I'll have you as the second, since you both did it at the same time.
Randall's louder.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye. I ain't going to vote no on that one until I get further information.
Okay. So Brett is a no, the rest of us are yes.
Thank you very much.
Okay.
Council members, I would like to go ahead and circulate that, and then keep you after the meeting, going to get better signatures.
Okay.
I need to get your signature on that. It's a formality related to, to the SBC board.
Oh, okay.
They're checking their paperwork. I don't need to help.
Okay. Does it have to be black? Does it have to be black ink?
Indelible. This whole color is indelible. What color?
We're not signing those.
Almost anything ready should be satisfactory.
Okay. Generally, I have a black ink pen, but today it's blue, so. Yeah, but those are the minutes, and we have stayed. So.
Sorry. Why are you present?
Okay. So because we changed the meeting date today, we have to table the additional appropriations for Doug Hall, insurance check, Green County Economic Development, surveyor recorder perpetuation, and EMS dispatch, commissary, Green County Sheriff. So I guess up next would be our additional...
Kelly, could we get a motion to table?
A motion? Okay. So I would entertain a motion to table.
I'll make it.
Okay.
Second.
Okay. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Who did that second?
Randall. Okay. Okay. So up next are additional appropriations to advertise along with those four, obviously. Green County Sheriff restitution check for a thousand dollars. George?
It happened, so. It's about a year ago, we had one of our vehicles damaged. We received a thousand dollars restitution from that individual, so we'd like to advertise for an additional appropriation, so we get that thousand dollars back, go back into our sheriff's vehicle.
Back in Sheriff's.
Make a motion to advertise.
Okay. Well, made a...
Second.
And Brett, second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Who did that second?
Randall. Okay. Okay. So up next are additional appropriations to advertise along with those four, obviously. Green County Sheriff restitution check for a thousand dollars. George?
It happened, so. It's about a year ago, we had one of our vehicles damaged. We received a thousand dollars restitution from that individual, so we'd like to advertise for an additional appropriation, so we get that thousand dollars back, go back into our sheriff's vehicle.
Sheriff's.
Make a motion to advertise.
Okay. Well, made a...
Second.
And Brett, second. All in favor, say aye.
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 Okay. And do you have some transfers to discuss with us?
We do. We'd like to transfer twelve hundred and sixty dollars from our LCC grant money back to the sheriff's fund. The grant money came through, we had used it. We use that money typically for our Reed School Investigation, interrogation, training for our deputies. We didn't have the money at the time, so paid for it out of a training budget. We'd like to reimburse that training budget, because this grant money, that's what it's for, just the timing doesn't work out. So we got those funds back from the LCC grant, and we'd like to replenish our other training money.
Okay. So a motion for the transfer of twelve sixty from the LLC grant money to the sheriff's training fund.
I'll make that motion.
Karen, second.
I'll second. Jerry, you go.
Okay. Brian, second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay. Approved.
The next one, and it's a big one, but we ran into the county to see some changes in our budget, price of gasoline, burning a few more deputies' cars. We are budgeted for seventy thousand dollars for gas, we're down to about ten thousand dollars already. Price of gas is out of everybody's control. To make it through, hopefully through the end of the year, we'd like to take, again, out of the medical and hospital and jail fund, forty thousand dollars, and transfer it to the sheriff gasoline fund.
Transfer to what?
To the sheriff's budget for gasoline. Yeah, we're, we're just a little over half the year. We burned sixty thousand dollars for the gas, that's all we do is go from ball-to-ball crash to crash, and we're running two more vehicles, and we're doing a lot of transport stuff.
Okay. I would entertain a...
I think that's the new normal on gas prices, and we won't function well without meals for inmates of gasoline.
Okay. I would entertain a motion to transfer forty thousand from the medical and hospital, jail, jail fund to sheriff's gas fund.
I'll make it.
Brian, second. Ron, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. So approved.
The next one, again, from the jail, medical and hospital, to the sheriff's training fund, we'd like to transfer twenty-nine hundred dollars. We're trying to do more training. We do a lot, but we're trying to get more formal, more advanced training outside of our doors. We do a lot of internal training. Basically, I'm trying to get our trainers more advanced education so they can bring new things to the department.
I know you and I talked about it, but what's it take to train a negotiator? Because you're about out.
Well, I still am. When I trained with the FBI, though, that was fifteen years ago, and I think it was several hundred dollars.
I mean, I don't mean that. I mean, does it take a month, two months, a year?
It was a week of formal training with the FBI that I went through. The same with Sean Colson, he's one of our other negotiators. And then it's just, you know enough to approach it and the steps, but, you know, it takes you several incidents, and they're all different, to really start getting a little polish on it, I guess. But it's, you know, something you don't learn overnight. It's different on every incident that I've negotiated. Some are over fifteen minutes, my longest one's been six and a half hours. They only do without anybody getting hurt, and, you know, that's your goal, because usually somebody barricaded up, and you want everybody to go home, you know, nobody get hurt, and...
I was thinking you had a candidate, like, maybe wait to go to school to do that. How long would that take?
Usually, it takes longer to wait for, to find the training, because it's not something that somebody does every day. And you usually have to send people a great distance typically. We were lucky on mine, we found it in Wilmington, at the FBI office, they hosted the training, and it was, you know, it was excellent fan of excellent people. That's all I do every day, so it's fantastic training. You get real young scenarios. But, yeah, it's a lengthy process in about everything we do. You go to the academy, the training's getting ready to get bumped up to about twenty weeks, and you learn the bare bones, and then you put the polish on it. And that's just the foundation, and it's incumbent on us to build off of that for our people. And this wouldn't be any different, but twenty-nine hundred dollars doesn't get you much training, but it'll give us something. I'm sure you guys are all well aware, the last month has been extremely busy. I had an officer that witnessed a suicide right in front of me, trying to negotiate with a guy in the dark. We had Martin County, high-speed, chasing a guy from Martin County into Berra County, he was out on foot. We finally got him called up about four o'clock in the morning. We recently had officers involved in police action shooting. Look for me to come to you for things that don't qualify, but some of the things we, on my agenda for this year, are getting nuked up to the right to the front of the line. We need a drone to send in where we really don't want to send officers. You know, it's very uncomfortable. I did it two weeks ago, approached Cairo with shield, but we just had, you know, really bad people crash. When you can send a drone in, you know, with the individual in the tent, you know, when I get a drone, it's going to have thermal imaging, and it's going to have a spotlight, it's going to have a speaker, it's going to have the tools that we need. But we're behind the curve in a lot of technology. We worked on a lot of it as far as what the deputies use every day. But we are woefully behind in tactical equipment with all the violence against police nowadays. I need every one of my people to have a shield that they can lock their car in a west account that they can put on. We already, you guys have graciously approved the heavy armor last year, when we had the first-time rifle plates in our desk, before most rifles are going through our desk. So we're getting there, and it's, you know, this is that proverbial elephant, we're eating it one bite at a time, but there's a lot of changes that need to happen, so our people go home safe. They do a fantastic job, and they get in some horrible situations. So training, going to training, training as a team, you know, we're, we got to do more of it, we got to, we've got to do better, so they go home. So Ron and I talked, getting kind of out of a soapbox, and that's Ron's fault. But, you know, our overtime budget's the same as it was for years and years and years, and that doesn't afford me much, because, you know, each time we are lucky to get the raises up, we do, then my time and a half rate goes up, I get less for, less training hours out of it. You know, I need to have a team of people that are well rehearsed, and know how to handle some of these situations that we've been having. And that takes monthly routine training. You know, if you don't use it, you lose it, and it's the same with tactical training. And what our people are looking at nowadays is very different than when Brian started or when I started. And I have to recognize that and prepare for it, and make sure these young people go home. I do a very good job, and do it for the right reasons. Super proud of them, but we got to take care of them, and that's for me to sort out and bring it to you, and hopefully we can find a resolution. I'm off there spending commissary money to do it, some of it may take your approval to do, and I know you'll make the right decision, but I'll get off that soapbox now.
If I can have a question, on the medical and hospital, I'm assuming you're still going to have, we've received a transfer already, but I really don't know what the balance in that account was, so...
Will still be good, and actually, Karen, with the contract with QCC, if you look back on the history of that account, we use very little of it, we've always put in, preparing, you know, have it there for an emergency, but some of the things that we couldn't do quality correctional care could build to their insurance, we used to not be able to do it. So it's been a really good offer, and we don't have to spend that money. If you look back historically, the last few years, most of it's been transferred. I'm working on trying to get the budget more realistic every year, but, you know, it's always been money transferred out of that fund heavily. I don't want to call it a slush fund, you, basically, you're moving money around to pay the bills, but, you know, you should have, and I should be able to provide you. It's my first year, I didn't prepare my budget, I'm working it now, but, you know, trying to sort out what a more realistic number is on things, okay? And sometimes that's a moving target with the costs. I don't wanna call it a slush fund, you, you, basically, you're moving money around to pay the bills, but, you know, you should have, and I should be able to provide you. It's my first year, I didn't prepare my budget, I'm working it now, but, you know, trying to sort out what a more realistic number is on things, okay? And sometimes that's a moving target with the costs. But I'm gonna try and, and get you the most realistic numbers that I can, and the things that, you know, we're not using, maybe we can pare those down and put it in other places, and you can have a more realistic look at what we're ever really spending our money. But I think we're, to answer your question, I think we're gonna be fine, we transferred heavily out of it, and quality correctional care has been, been a blessing, and they, they do allow us to use insurance through them, we could use as the office of the sheriff.
Okay, so I would entertain a motion to transfer the $2,900 from medical and hospital out of jail budget to sheriff's trading budget.
So.
Okay, Randall?
I'll say.
And Brent, second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay.
And last but not least, out of the same front, same fund, the medical and hospital and the jail, we'd like to transfer $9,000 to communications in the sheriff's budget. And that, just how basically, y'all just pay our AT&amp;T bill on things that have just gone up, gone up, gone up, and, uh, sometimes the same numbers get put in from the year before that really probably should have been bumped up, and been more realistic. And I can't make excuses, that's, you know, that happens, and like I said, we're gonna try and, once we've got some real live numbers from this year, try and, you know, try this year on what we could, on the budget that I provided, submitted, and try and make it as realistically accurate as we can.
I'll make a motion to that.
Okay, so Ron made a motion, I need a second.
Second.
Jerry, second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Thank you, counsel, we appreciate everything you do for us.
Thank you.
I don't know what's wrong with the Tarver County's amendments.
Not even.
I thought it was a ten.
It's actually, what it does, it's just a little clarification on a matter that was already in there, our original plan, about the funding of the EMS building. Uh, it didn't have a number originally, when we first got that appropriation, uh, we got the plan approval, uh, it didn't have a number, but at this point in time, we have a number, so we made the amendment to the plan. We would request that you would approve the amendment to the plan.
So Nathan, we're going back into one of these other paragraphs where there was an appropriation, and you're actually filling in a number or something?
Yes, I think it was three C.
Paragraph nine, is that correct, Marvin? Uh, something like that.
No, it was three C.
Three C, Karen?
I don't remember. Three C is correct, it's on page three of the draft you should have.
I just got this tenth amendment I printed out, but I didn't see any, like, couldn't di- I couldn't, uh-
Determine what your-
Determine what the change was.
Yes. That is the current bid on our new EMS facility.
So I've got a question.
So if, uh, this wasn't approved, the total amount, how would you pay for this building?
We would, uh, we'd, we'd be in breach of the contract, and we'd be dead.
There was quite a language change there. I don't know why that, in the old one, it read contribute to the cost of construction new emergency medical service ambulance station offices, that went into the greatest extent permissible under ARPA, more specifically, including not limited to contributing to the cost of constructing of dormitory sanitary facilities, heating, ventilation, cooling, health level of air exchange, addition of a drive-through bay to facilitate local testing, vaccination opportunities, and we went to construction of a new EMS, emergency medical service ambulance station and offices.
And that's because the requirements of the use of that money has changed. In the beginning-
Had to say stuff like that.
It had to say stuff like that, and then was the requirements changed, and, and this is just my opinion, the federal government got tired of dealing with, everybody's little, every time they want to spend some of that money, they had to give a big lengthy thing they had to go through, so then they came back down and said, if it's less than $10 million, if you could use it for your normal government activities, go ahead. So that's the reason the language changed. Originally, the language was put in there to make sure that it met all the qualifications for use of the ARPA money, for when everything was being-
I cannot find it on my-
From her reporting.
Now, I know, Marvin, you said this qualifies in one of your emails.
Uh, it does qualify, but I wanted to add to that, that in the early days of ARPA, there were restrictions against building new facilities. It was not contemplated. You could do things to improve ventilation or contribute to ventilation, you could do things that contributed toward, uh, social distancing, um, and you could do a lot of other things that become components of what this said in earlier versions, but you couldn't do buildings. Uh, with the shift to the standard allowance for money under $10 million, which commissioners did elect to take that approach for the remainder of the money, it opened up considerably, not entirely, but considerably, what you could do with the funds. And there's no question in my mind, for a variety of reasons, that the construction now is excellent.
My only question there would be, and I'm no, I'm no lawyer, but we approved something back years, went months ago or whatever, that had the appropriate legal description, that has a date on it in our record somewhere, that said that met the requirement. Now we're going back and changing that, is, is that not put us at risk of a challenge? That, no, you originally said that, and that's originally there, and now you, you've taken all that stuff out and going back and actually rewriting something that was approved back when it was all legal, even though it's not, not necessary now, why wasn't it just like added back here to like paragraph whatever? Fifteen, fourteen?
I think it's, uh, it's added on page one, where it says the tenth amendment.
Oh, I know that, right. And amendment, we're going back and amending something that was previously approved in a paragraph, I, I guess I'm just-
My, my urge, maybe would be that when you amend something, you do change it, but-
Well, that's the plan, obviously, right?
Add to it, it stays the same, but you just add it?
Add to it or take away from it.
Right.
What are the difficulties about this? Pardon me?
It's either a dead number, it's-
So that's okay.
No, I was just going to say that one of the difficulties about this is that planning is a moving target, and was always contemplated to be a moving target, uh, I think even by the federal government, although there's not a lot of discussion beyond the necessity of, um, of a plan for, of a plan for the use of the funds. But in the day that that language was proffered by the federal government, we had no ideas and no guidance, and we're shooting in the dark, and every few weeks, we got more and more and more guidance, and then we got the standard allowance, and we got more and more and more guidance on that. And one of the difficulties there is, what exactly is a government service? Does everything actually qualify as a government service? Well, as the song says, it ain't necessarily so, but awful lot of stuff does. But the, the real point of that is that this has been a moving target since, uh, what, the end of April, 2021?
April 6th, in the order.
That was, and that's the reason that, I saw a question from Kelly that came through, uh, that's the reason we hired March and Phil, was to make sure we were doing everything by the book, and this was their, how to handle about their recommendation to begin with, this is how to handle it, and then you just amend your plan as you go along, which you have something.
It has a paper trail there.
Yes, there is a paper trail there.
Yes.
So we need the attorney that's-
That's another discussion that they-
What is it? We still need the attorney that advised you on this.
I mean-
The attorneys we used at $500 an hour, is that what you're talking about?
That's what, that, he answered the question as to what that money was being spent for, but. So did we ever figure out exactly how much money is left after, if we approved this amendment for the 1.2 million plus?
1.2 is for the ambulance, correct?
For the EMS facility, yes.
One point two four.
One point?
Two four.
Four four.
I would say your, I would say the answer is no, we, because in your email, Marvin, being, you indicated that it was like 700 and some thousand, you didn't think that's spent?
I think it's pretty clear that, uh, I think the amount was 750,000 that was not spent.
But that is gonna be added to the 1.7 that we think is in there now?
So are you talking about the 750 that was appropriated the very first thing that we approved?
April 26th, 2021.
Yes. So you're pretty certain that we still have that on top of the 1.777?
The bank account seems to make that fairly clear, we've got 4.782 million dollars sitting in this account. Uh, I've been through to the best of my ability with the information in my hands, what has been spent, what has not been spent, and what I have some questions about spent, whether it's been spent. But, um, but overall, overall, we've spent a, uh, what, a million for, give or take, because of the interest earnings. I didn't take time to go back through and calculate the interest additions over all of that time. Um, but as of June 30th, the bank account balance was 4.782 million. Uh, that's as far as I know, with no obligations against it, other than the last, I think, two, uh, amendments to the plan. And that would be the $850,000 that was last approved, uh, in, I think it was June, for the chiller loan, uh, the additional money for 2024 community crossings, matching grant, and $100,000 toward the proposal of, uh, employee participation in the Aerie Back membership program subsidized by the county. And then prior to that, I, I need $600,000 allocated to the highway department as three-quarters of payment toward the estimated $800,000 cost for, for new dump trucks. I don't know what the status of that is, the only thing I can say with certainty is that it was not shown in the transactions that I could see. There certainly wasn't a check written to a vendor for that equipment.
So, we got in the hospital, $350,000, that was from your cum cap?
Oh, right. No, that was from our office.
Is that on here?
Yeah.
Yes, that was, that was the last one, and it's, uh, the last line.
In that last line.
Yeah, okay.
You and I weren't here at that meeting for that.
So Marvin, this, this list, did you prepare this?
I did.
Yeah, and so, I guess-
Rather my assistant and I closely heard.
This 6 million at the top, six and change, and all these appropriations, gives us, it looks like an unappropriated balance of 1.7?
An unappropriated balance of 1.7, but then you have to go back and look at what was actually spent.
And that was this.
That, uh, that was a combination of the transaction report from the auditor's office that I sent to you, plus the email that I sent that tried to walk through from that 6.2 million dollars back through what's actually been spent, what is outstanding in the way of appropriations yet to be fulfilled, and raising a couple of questions about what I'm not sure was spent. And those were comparatively small amounts, if I recall correctly. The one that comes to mind immediately relates to the health department and helping subsidize the community health work.
Okay, so, right now, we're saying there's like a little over 4.7 million?
That is what was in the bank account of-
Since, uh, June 30th.
June 30th, yes.
And then we still, we've appropriated 1.45 million between April and June. So if we appropriate this, then we're still saying we have a little over a million dollars probably in that account.
Sounds about right.
Okay.
Now, what was we talking about earlier about the helicopter benefits, that we wouldn't acquire, we didn't quite have enough to cover every employee in the county?
The $100,000 Aerie Back employee plan.
Does that cover everybody?
It's covered 200 employees?
It's 108,000 to cover all, to, to cover 200 employees.
How many employees do we have in the county?
238.
Because I asked that because there was an email solicitation, I think, from Cassie?
Yes.
That said, hey, sign up if you want to, tell me if you don't, and I think she said in that email that there wasn't enough money to cover everybody, or that they're gonna have to appropriate some more money or do something.
It said additional money would be, would be located, uh-
If all 230?
No disrespect to Cassie, but I wrote that language, so.
Okay.
I didn't receive that.
Well, I see so many emails, I think that comes from one person, it ends up coming six change later from somebody else.
No, we, we work together on a lot of things, and, uh, she asked if I had any ideas how to approach it, and sometimes it's just easier to say, did you like this? Here it is.
Okay. Because I asked her to hold everybody, so we would get a accurate count, so that we can figure what we're gonna do the rest of the way.
Um, I don't really have an idea at the moment.
Because we would like to get that program rolled out by October 1st. It's our goal.
So what you're saying is we, we can wait till September?
You got, you, you've got till, you've got till Friday to say whether or not you want in.
I got you. No, I'm just kidding.
Her email was going out this afternoon, you've got till Friday to let us know.
Well, it'd be, it'd be to the program we're gonna have.
It's getting a very good response, actually, from employees.
We have, it's a city. So do most of them on here?
Yes. I, I mean, that, we don't have final numbers yet, but I know all the highway department did, every, and if you get all those guys, you know that, Brad knows how that is.
I don't know why you wouldn't, unless you already have it, unless you're already involved in one, or to your spouse or something.
Even, and then they pause it.
Yeah.
If you're already joined, they pause your personal membership until this one expires, and then they pick up your personal. Is what they told us at the commissioner's meeting they presented.
Boy, I pretty well know exactly what- Boy, I pretty well know exactly where the ARPA fund is, pretty much, except for, like you said, we had a question of what has already been spent and where it was spent. But there's a pretty good balance on this paper of where the most of it is.
So do you guys have any...
If you're not, I'll see it, just doesn't matter.
So do you have plans for the rest of the money already?
Yeah, the ex, the expansion of the event centers will take a big chunk.
I think we've been looking for a small chunk, because we haven't got anything out of it. We've gone to with sheriffs and that went away.
I don't remember anybody ever coming to the commissioners meeting requesting anything on that money.
Well, I went to Rick, and then Rick said...
I don't recall anybody coming to the commissioners meeting and requesting any money.
Sure.
That would be the proper way to do that.
Okay.
Just like I come to you and request.
Mm-hmm.
So are there any other questions?
I'd like to make a motion to table this till the next meeting so we can go to a commissioners meeting and maybe ask for funds for the rainy day fund. That's just how I feel about it.
Ron, could you repeat that statement, please?
Ron, do you have anything that you really want to spend the money on? Because if not, you're just being a pain in the butt.
Yeah, okay.
That's your fault.
Go ahead and move on.
I think he made a motion, didn't he?
Yeah, I made a motion, I'm not...
There's a motion on the floor.
I second.
Okay, so Ron made a motion to table till the August meeting.
Why are you taping it?
He says he wants an opportunity to go to the commissioners meeting and make a request.
And ask for what?
I, I don't know, Karen, but he wants an opportunity. He's been told he has to go to meetings, so he wants to go.
I'd like the opportunity to go to the commissioners meeting and ask if the council can use some of the...
Or what? Or what?
I don't have to tell you even right now, do I?
We are a board, and everybody on this board should be on the same page, so yes, you have to tell us now.
I won't, I decided I'll let you know.
So you're just being a pain about it?
No, I'm not being a pain about it.
What are you doing?
We want to put money back into our rainy day fund, the money we were going to loan out of it.
You can't use ARPA funds for that.
You can't use ARPA funds to go to the...
And keep the money in the rainy day fund.
And not use ARPA funds for the rainy day.
Why not?
You can't put money from the ARPA funds directly into the rainy day.
Exactly.
We know that, but you can use ARPA funds for something else that maybe general fund money would be spent for, and then that general fund money could be put into the rainy day fund.
So is everyone on this board okay with the fact that we're not going to do the EMS building? That's what we're saying in this statement?
That's not, that's not what we're saying at all.
What are we doing?
It just holds up to construction by, by some days.
For what reason? We already know we have a million dollars left.
It's a month later that we can start.
Well, I mean, I made a proper procedure on trying to get money back to us so we don't have to spend a month.
We got, we, the money doesn't come back to us, it wasn't given to us to start with.
There's a motion, I'm second. The arguments don't matter, we vote.
Yeah.
So there's a motion?
This is the first time that this has been circulated, to my knowledge, in seven meetings, to look at the balance and the appropriations of all the $6 million that's come before this council. I have, I've looked at it, there's things in there that I've got questions about. I appreciate the work Marvin has done. We got this a couple of days ago to look at, so I'm okay with Ron tagging this 30 days.
The money belongs to the commissioners.
I'm okay with Ron tagging this 30 days for us to get a better grip of how much money do we actually have? We're getting ready to appropriate 1.2 million and knock it down to about 700 grand, which is also going to be appropriated probably for the event center. So we're, we're almost done, are we not? We are almost done.
That's correct.
And to pause 30 days, I would like to have that opportunity.
Let's just vote.
To look at it. Okay.
Okay, so all those, all those that, um, want to table to the August meeting, um, I guess I'll do a roll call vote. Brian?
No.
No? Okay. Jerry?
I'm a more yes, that way they, they know what they're getting.
Okay, Randall, yes? Ron?
Yes.
Brad?
No, no, I'm satisfied with the information I gave.
Okay, Karen?
No.
And I am a yes.
Okay, I've got a little more information here for y'all. We have, uh, the Board of Finance has two meetings a year. One's the first meeting of the year. The other we're doing first, our first commissioner meeting in July. This is, uh, interest money that has been made this year, sorry, Jerry, just give me one.
Off the ARPA funds?
No.
Interest off of everything?
This is county funds.
Okay.
My heart's ready to finger to work.
You said this was a July meeting?
Yes.
For the Board of Finance? Okay.
Excuse me. Excuse me.
I want to furnish that information so that you, you get a little better understanding about some money that's probably you don't have, didn't have any idea that we had, that we've earned this year. That is just through the first six months. Thank you all for your time.
Thank you.
Nathan, I'm sorry, could I ask you a question about this chart? These, uh, so on the first chart you gave us here, this total, so to the right, is that the grand total that you have earned? 591, 562?
Yes, sir.
For the first six months?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Then, then that's the list of the depositories where that money is at.
Got it.
And then the second page, that is just, uh, that is CDs that we have that are separate from those other funds. That is, the interest has just been earned on the CDs.
31,000.
Yes.
591, 562, 3189?
Yes, that is, that's, that's not combined. That's two separate, so it's over 600,000.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, so county attorney.
Unless you have specific questions or needs of me at this point, I have nothing to add.
Okay.
I have a problem, Kelly, before we adjourn.
Yeah, we've got some other business here.
I'm a little concerned, a lot, a lot of our concern has aggravated that we're having discussions, people are about things that are going to happen that changed this board, and not everyone is in those discussions. And so first I heard that we're putting money in the rainy day fund, which is stupid, but being that as a lady, I've said this before, I said it to Jerry, everybody on this board should be on the same page and know all the same information. And I keep getting this feeling that there are certain people having side conversations, and not everybody knows what those side conversations are, and I ticked three off. All I got to say about that.
Karen, Ron and I had a side conversation for five minutes prior to the meeting starting, the only ones. No side conversation outside of coming here today, and he was asking about the ARPA funds. I said, I had a concern because this is the first time we've had this much detailed information about this.
I disagree on that, because if you went through all the amendments, you would know what was obligated.
Ron, no, obligated?
Well, I'm not going to sit here and argue. You guys are getting argument, Karen made her statement, you made yours. I don't want to carry this into meetings.
Correct.
That's not what the...
Um, we still have other business, though. There's two things. Um, so we hired Cassie Cox in to start with our HR for human resources to start in with things. So there is training that she needs to take, um, to be certified in human resources. And so, um, part of this is my fault, I should have thought of this much sooner so we could have advertised it. Um, when, Heather, can you remember, when was it that we went to that, um, Association of Indiana Counties, the meeting, that they have the class on that? Do you remember when that was? Okay, so back in February, we went to a meeting, there was a lady that is the human resources, um, manager in Morgan County, human resources director in Morgan County. And so I had reached out to her and she gave me some information, I had talked to Marvin, he gave me some information, I think it was probably right about the time I had my surgery, I talked to Cassie, and she is very much interested in taking the classes that she needs to get certified. And so, like I said, I dropped the ball on getting this, um, information from her for the last meeting so we could get the process going, but she looked into it. Classes will start August 21st, and she has to register by August 16th. So the cost for her to go do that is $1,300 off the bat. Um, and then I emailed Marvin after I talked to Cassie this morning, and so some other expenses within the realm of her doing this would probably be doing, um, mileage, paying her mileage to go, um, any other kind of supplies that she would need on top of that. So, uh, right now, what I need is, um, some discussion, how you guys feel about this. Um, it's something that, you know, if we're serious about having a human resource department, then, um, we need to get going on this. And she has expressed an interest in taking the classes so that she will be qualified to, um, handle the job that is required from a human resources person. So, um, we're going to need an additional appropriation, start that process, unless, I believe Marvin said, if the auditor's office would have some funds that we could use to start off, and then we could do, reimburse her office with the additional appropriation. So do, um, anybody have any questions, comments?
Why would she not, why would the auditor's office or she not be here asking for that, I guess? Where are you asking for it?
Um, I asked Cassie...
There's kind of things like discussions going on that nobody else knows about.
Okay, like I said, Karen, I dropped the ball, and I thought of this late last night after I was looking at stuff for today's meeting. I called Cassie this morning while I was out picking beans, um, to see if she could get me the information. I asked her to give it to Heather. Um, probably I should have asked her to come to the meeting. I didn't think to do that, I apologize. Um, like I said, I had went to a meeting, uh, went to a class back in February. I did talk to Marvin to see what he thought about this, about her getting the accreditation that she needed. And like I said, I just didn't think about us needing to have this discussion. I haven't been here the last two meetings due to surgery and a death. So, any other comments or questions?
You want to excuse yourself, Kelly, and I'll finish up the meeting?
Yes.
Okay, we, Kelly's brought up the thing here, I think, on it, Marvin. Can this have to be on the advertise to Jim's even move forward on anything like that? And it just be brought up?
Other matters, other business that's coming before the council.
Does everybody...
But it's not going to get advertised and approved before August 21st.
No, it is not.
Yeah, so... They've let until next meeting? Or make a move on it today?
The next meeting is August 21st. Enrolment must be done by August 16th, so if this is going to take place this year, if it need to be, a discussion of, uh, approach needs to take place. And, um, there may not be any good approaches at this point, I don't know.
Now, let me, let me ask this. Everybody's on the council here, we've talked about this HR position, is this something that we're seriously considering? I know we said we've tried it the whole year.
I think it needed to happen.
I realize during the seventh month, myself personally, you're going to have to have an HR person. And I think the sooner the better, I'm not trying to push anybody's vote, trying to rush them. Is it something we're not comfortable with? I have a question about an HR person. I've never seen an HR person in an open office where there's peoples right behind him at another desk. Well, I think our intentional plan, or the way I understood it was that if we hired an HR person, maybe we'd have the office at the front.
Well, it, my, my recollection is that we started out last year as, uh, basically as a place to start. And because there was no place else to go really with this, the HR position was attached to the auditor's office. Through no fault of the auditor, we know that that's not an ideal situation down there for dealing with personal matters that come through HR from time to time. Uh, your discussion had been one of see how this works out for the year, then when budget time comes up in 2023, uh, or perhaps later than 2023, consider whether or not to establish HR as its own independent department. And then, of course, if you do that, there are several other steps that need to be taken. Finding space, providing equipment, furnishings, and that's relatively minor compared to a lot of other things. But, uh, that's my recollection of how things were approached at budget time last year.
Well, let me just go something hypothetical here to commissioners. Would it be possible to take the commissioners' office from here? I mean, I'm not asking for, I'm just seeing if that's a definite power in turning it in, maybe you guys get an office at the, the annex with 4H Ferragamo? Because I think if we do this, the HR person needs to be at the courthouse.
I mean, so definitely.
With the T1 law, you have to, you can't have anybody looking over your shoulder filling out paperwork. It's just... If somebody's overhearing something, then, you know. You know, I'm just throwing that as often, obviously, we will not vote on that until the time comes, but is that something that might be worked out? Would that be a note?
We'll do whatever the statute requires us to do.
We'll talk more on that later and go from there. Is there enough room in the auditor's office to make an office? Is it that big?
Really?
No.
Not with stuff like that, still, we're still...
It's not ideal.
They're going to have, they're going to have to win it now.
So what we...
We can cross that bridge the way we get to it, but...
Are we just talking about whether or not to approve this, to get registered and deal with the appropriation at the next meeting for the funding of the class?
There's no way you can do that, because you can't advertise it in time for her to register.
I make a motion that this be tabled. If she wants to take the class, she's going to have to do it next year.
Karen, may I interject? Before doing that, may I pose a question to Heather?
Sure.
Heather, do you have trading money in your budget sufficient to advance this? And then you ask for the appropriation at the next meeting or reimburse for that? Or not ask for... Or not ask for reimbursement until, uh, it's clear that you need it? And that's money that's already been appropriated, is that correct? So that would be an avenue of covering this and getting her into the program right now?
And I would have thought this topic, but I wasn't aware of it.
That's fine.
Yeah.
We're not coming, you know.
Karen, I know you said the word motion, did you make a motion to table it?
Well, if Heather will agree to take it out of her, uh, training.
Well, do we have to make a?
That's already appropriated, then how do we withdraw that money?
So we don't have to make any kind of discussion?
Make a motion?
Go forward with it, or we not?
Already decided. She, that is gonna give us some space, I just feel.
No, it was not, Jerry.
Okay, so that, that was, I must have missed it. But I, I know they, somebody said it be better if it was at the courthouse.
There's no question about that. But it, it was set up to try to get appeal for how it was going to work, and we're actually trying to establish a whole new department. And whether we are at the point of establishing a whole new department or need to wait a while longer. I think as a discussion, or I would encourage, that it be a discussion, uh, first and foremost with Cassie. And then also with the auditor's office, and then obviously with commissioners or anyone else that needs to be involved in order to figure out how to make that happen, when everybody decides that it's time for it to happen.
So we're looking for a motion to approve that, or we don't have?
You don't need to do anything, because that money has already been appropriated and is available at Heather's discretion for departmental training. At some point, she may come back and seek an appropriation to replace those funds. There are some other funds that will be involved, but those will be going forward. Under the circumstances, assuming Cassie attends live classes rather than attends by Zoom, then it is reasonable to expect to pay her mileage, maybe you're paying her tuition.
Right.
I doubt that there would be any significant bias associated with it. The thirteen hundred dollars includes books and materials within the program. But when it comes time to take the certification exam through the, uh, organization that does the actual certification, I believe that the, I believe that the exam fee is three hundred thirty-five dollars, if I remember correctly. And so that's going to come from somewhere. Again, whether there's enough money in Heather's budget to allow that to take care of Karen right there, followed by, uh, seeking an additional appropriation if it is needed. That's gonna be between Heather and you folks. Is this where you're also talking about it has to be done by the sixteenth? She has to enroll by the sixteenth in order for classes to start with her in the classes on the twenty-first. Heather has the means of making that happen with funds that have already been appropriated. And so, at least for now, uh, it's, I think it's been good to have the discussion. I think it will be good to continue the discussion, particularly with regard to how to go forward with HR. But for the moment, I think you've got the problem solved.
We've got the ball rolling right now, so we don't have to wait till end of next, or into next year to start it's all over and then.
It's just that much longer, that.
You know, I'm just speaking for myself, but it's gonna have to happen, it's in our way or something. All right, then, is there any more questions on this? Comments?
Did Kelly have anything else? You think that was it?
I think that was it. Anybody else, any other things? Great.
Yeah, I, two seconds. I really just wanted to hi everyone. I would just want to hear this, Ariel Shelton, she is my new assistant, she started with me on June fifth. She and her husband Caleb, they'll hopefully acre campgrounds, I like to, I make the connection for those who may not know Ariel, but know the campground, so anyway, just wanted to.
Stand up and say hi.
Uh, five minutes to her.
Over here on the.
I remember this. Nice to meet you all.
Yes, yep, so that's all.
Thank you.
Thank you, Karen.
Anybody else? Jerry? The only one smiling, David.
I'm sorry, I have one other thing, um, sorry about that. Um, the September meeting, we will need to change that if possible to the week before. Um, because we've got some of our members, and I'm pretty certain maybe our auditor is going to the AIC Annual Conference. So that would be September eighteenth instead of September twenty-fifth. So is everybody on board with changing the meeting?
I'm on it.
Okay, so, um, yes, I'll need a motion to change the meeting for, from September twenty-fifth to September eighteenth.
All right, motion?
Okay, okay, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Um, motion for adjournment?
Aye.
Okay. Second?
Second.
Okay. I'm sorry, okay, thank you. All in favor?
Aye, aye, aye.
Jerry, did you second that motion?
Yes, I did.
Yes, he did.